Okay, thank you for attending the Montclair City Council meeting. I want to call this meeting to order. And we will begin with our invocation and the pledge allegiance. And I'll have the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Maggie Burbank Yonoki of Montevista Unitarian Universa... Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Montevista Unitarian Universalist Congregation.
You better not do that.
And the pledge will be led by Councilmember Martinez.
All right, come on up. Everybody please stand.
Gathered in this space, the people's place, we let go of the fullness of our days and we focused our best intentions on both the blessings that come with public service and also the hard work that we are here to accomplish together. The heartfelt dutiful governance of our beloved city of Montclair. May we honor the ancestors of this land and those descendants yet to come with our integrity, our ethics, and our love for this place we know as home. May each and every individual in our city, no matter their social location, find warm welcome and deep belonging among us. And may all of our actions bring us closer to making things better for all. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, as part of the invocation, I just want to think about the people in Turkey and Syria as a result of the dramatic earthquake that took place there. And since we have not met since the last meeting, I also would like to think of the people from Monterey Park and, of course, Hack Moon Bay, of that, those tragedies that took place there. So, we will now have roll call.
I'd like to state for the record that Councilmember Lopez has been excused and will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. Councilmember Martinez? Here. Councilmember Rue? Via Zoom.
Councilmember Rue, you there, Bill?
Hi, this is Councilmember Rue. I am present via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's difficult to hear, but...
Hey, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
I'm here.
And Mayor Dutre?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, so, presentation, Chino Basin Water Conservation District. And who wants to lead off?
We have our Director, Katie Parker.
Welcome aboard, Director Parker. And of course, you don't waste any time hitting the ground after you got elected in November.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dutre and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Like she said, my name is Katie Parker and I am your elected official for the Chino Basin Water Conservation District here for Montclair. I also represent Upland. So I'm here tonight to invite you to the groundwater basin sustainability tour. We will be hosting, we actually have two tours, but the first one is pretty full up. That was February 16th next week. So if you would like to come, we have room on June 1st. Let's see. And it worked when we were testing it.
Yeah.
Click on the mouse? Okay, all right, there we go. Okay, so this tour will show you how the Chino Basin Water Conservation District has been protecting our largest source of water supply since 1949. By recharging the groundwater basin, which is 70% of our water supply through a series of pits and recharge basins, as we call them, that capture water and replenish our drinking water. This is basically a half-day tour, starting at our Waterwise Community Center located right here in Montclair, just south of the 10 freeway on San Bernardino Road. And from there, we will take a bus all the way to the top of the Chino Basin watershed near Mount Baldy and drive all the way down the San Antonio Channel, as you can see here on the map. So here are the folks on the bus, and we do provide umbrellas because we go rain or shine. So you can see that we drive all the way down San Antonio Creek Channel. We visit the basins that take imported water from the state water project in Northern California, stormwater from when it rains, and recycle water from our own community. This is basically a really great opportunity to see behind-the-scenes infrastructure that sustains our entire community. And as I said, the Chino groundwater basin provides 70% of your tap water that you use every single day. So this really is a piggy bank that we use during the drought. This tour shows you the infrastructure that collects stormwater and recharges it when it rains so that we can use it when it doesn't rain. So this is one of the reasons why during the current drought, we haven't had to face the same water restrictions that other basins have because we have the Chino groundwater basin and such a huge storage basin right underneath our own feet. We're very fortunate. So, hope to see you all on June 1st. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think I'm already signed up for the one next week, February 16th.
For February?
Yeah, I'm already signed up for that one, I believe. And I believe you dress comfortably, right? Comfortable shoes?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, rain or shine.
Unlike my council colleagues.
Yeah. No heels for this one.
I saw how you dressed. You were dressed very elegant.
Well, I will see you next week then.
All right then, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we will now go down to the public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on either any items that are on the agenda or one of the consent calendar business items that's on the agenda. You have five minutes. And if you're on Zoom, you just raise your hand. Your hand indicator. If you're on the phone, you hit star nine. And if you're in the audience, you just fill out the speaker's card request. So Andrea, we have any speakers?
Yes. First on Zoom, we have Ruby Long from Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello, Ruby.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to make a quick announcement that on Saturday, March 11th, we will be hosting our free shredding event, and it's going to be partnered with the City of Montclair. So we're very excited to host the free shredding event with you guys, and it's going to be right there at the Montclair City Hall. So it's going to be at the parking lot. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And once again, we just ask that you are limited to three standard boxes for each vehicle. And once again, it's free. It's on March 11th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00, right there at City Hall.
Oh, perfect.
And that is it. So we look forward to seeing you then.
Okay, so if you want to have your document shredded, it's March 11th at 9:00 o'clock here at Montclair City Hall. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Our next speaker is Jordi Valdo from Montclair Chamber of Commerce.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening. I feel like it's a little higher than last time. All right. Good evening. My name is Jordi Valdo. I'm with the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. I am one of the event coordinators there. I'm here to invite everybody here and also our audience as well. We have a networking breakfast scheduled for February 9th at Oak Park. SB Workforce Development will be providing us information on the job training, so we're looking to have a full house for that, for that networking breakfast. We also have partnered with the Ready to Launch Initiative with the High School, Montclair High School, and we are going to be presenting them on February 22nd at 1:30 p.m. over at Montclair High School. Certificates and a quick little ceremony for them as well. So we again encourage you guys to be a part of that if you're available. And then, one of the biggest things too is that we're actually gearing up to have our nonprofit night with the, nonprofit night with the Montclair Chamber, which will be doing pre-sale tickets of $30, and it's a VIP Skybox section, and you'll have access to a pre-game tunnel experience, a post-game picture on the ice, and a Zamboni ride over at the Toyota Arena, supporting the Ontario Rain on Friday, March 10th at 7:30 p.m. So we're selling tickets for that as well. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Our next speaker is Nina Joyner from Christian Development Center.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Just fine.
Good. My name is Nina Joyner, and I am coming to you from Christian Development Center. I'm one of our event coordinators, and I'd like to invite the council and the rest of the community to our first annual Black History Fair that is going on this Saturday from 12 to 5 p.m., right down the street on, at 5080 Kingsley. And so we would all love for you to come out. We're having a Black History museum, many entertainers, and fun food and games, and so we'd love for you guys to come out and be a part.
Great.
Thank you.
I will be there.
All right, wonderful.
The funny thing, Councilmember Johnson's going to be there, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Councilmember Martinez will be there, and I believe Mayor, Councilmember Rue will be there as well, so you can count these four of us there.
All right, well, looking forward to seeing you guys.
No problem, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, there are, for all of the events that are just mentioned, there are flyers over there in case somebody's interested.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards.
No more speakers. Okay, all right. I'll make sure I have here. Let me, let's take a five-minute break. That's fine, we'll just take it from there. I don't think we... Are we good there?
Hello?
Okay, Bill, can you hear us, Bill, now? Councilmember Rue?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
All right, okay.
I think where I am.
All right, then we'll just stay right there. I want to call this meeting back to order, and we just finished public comment.
Thank you for accommodating.
And next time on the agenda is public hearings, and we're going to start with one item, which is the prioritization for CDBG programs. All right, who has this item?
I'll take it, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, for fiscal year 2023-24, city staff anticipates receiving approximately $271,698 from Community Development Block Grant Program that represents a minor increase over the current allocation of $271,518. As indicated on page four of the Agenda Pack, it staff recommends funding for the following programs: $80,970 for the city's code enforcement program, $150,000 for renovations to the Reader Ranch. I will remind you that approximately $500,000 in funding that was allocated previously for different improvements to the Reader Ranch was redistributed this current year to alleyway improvements in the Community Development Block Grant areas, and the council agreed at that time that they would be willing to continue funding Reader Ranch improvements through the CDBG program. $30,728 for the city's graffiti abatement program, and $10,000 for operation of the Golden Express Senior Transportation Services Program for a combined contribution of $271,518. One outside agency did apply for $10,000 in funding from the city's public service allocation, which is approximately $40,728. That agency has been referred to the city's Community Benefit Funding Program. Hearings will be conducted in March of this year by the Community Activities Commission. Additional funding will be recommended for that program through the mid-year budget process, and we expect that the CAC will consider funding for that organization and other organizations. The city historically uses its CDBG funding for the graffiti abatement program and operation of the Golden Express Transportation Program. And again, both of those programs are included in this year's recommendations by city staff. The impact, fiscal impact for the city this year again is the allocation of $271,698 in CDBG funding, and staff recommends the council approve the prioritization of projects as indicated in the Agenda Report for fiscal year 2023-24.
Great. I'm going to call this public hearing open. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any members of the council, I don't see no speakers from council. Councilmember Rue, I don't think you want to speak, this appears. So can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion for approval as presented.
Okay, Councilmember Rue first, and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson second. Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Dutre?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes four to zero.
Great, thank you. Next time is the consent calendar. Any members wish to remove, remove an item on the consent calendar? Anybody on my left here? Go ahead, Tanis.
I have a quick comment on item B4.
B4? B4, okay. Splash pad.
B4, okay.
Okay. Okay, and Bill, you have anything?
No, I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I got a question on C1. C1, excuse me, as I go through this. C1. Okay, let's start with...
Mr. Mayor, staff did also want to pull C1.
C1? Okay. All right, so why don't, go ahead, Tanis, we'll start with your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick comment. So, in past years, I think what has happened is when we got ready to open the splash pad, we couldn't open it because we didn't have parts and, you know, everything was backlog. And I am tickled beyond measure to see that folks are, it's February, and there's already work happening on the splash pad. So that assures me that by the time we have triple-digit heat, the members of our community will be able to utilize that. So thank you to staff for working on that now. That's all I have.
I do want to note that we are looking at additional options in relation to the improvements. This would be the most costly option. The other options would be less expensive, but whichever one looks the best, we will move with that option.
Awesomeness.
And I realize that's an expensive price tag for the splash pad, but the splash pad is a, there's a big demand for it in this community among our children, so I think it's a good investment. Okay, C1, did you have some to add?
Yeah, staff would actually like to continue this item. We are in discussions with the county related to sharing the cost of this particular study. It would expand it to be a specific plan as opposed to a feasibility study. Last year, staff met with the county related to this sphere of influence to discuss options related to the city's annexation of that area and the improvements that are required. We spoke at that time about the need to conduct these studies. We got back with the county last week, indicating that we were prepared to move forward, and if the county is interested in working with the city related to expanding the feasibility study to a specific plan study, then we would ask for the county to contribute the additional share of the cost to expand this to the specific plan. So the county is weighing that, and will get back with us, so we're asking to pull this, give the county some additional time to consider it internally, and then we'll bring it back to City Council.
Yeah, one question. Will this, so we're looking at developing a specific plan. Am I correct?
Yes.
It's not, it's not separate from our general plan?
Yes. Well, this recommendation here is a feasibility study, but if the county joins us, it'll be a specific plan.
And will this also, let's say we start annexing areas in the sphere of influence, is there a study in terms of cost?
Yes, that is what this will do.
This will look at costs, what the cost of services will be versus the, the fees, taxes coming in?
Well, it'll, it'll look at the development pattern that will occur in the sphere of influence, the costs related to doing the infrastructure improvement. It'll look at tax bases. It'll look at the overall cost related to the city's annexation of these areas, and in addition to that, what kind of marketing plans can be done in business development.
Okay, and, okay, that sounds good. As far as item D2 on the agenda, this is a resolution to bring the conclusion effective February 28th of the local state of emergency in Montclair related to the COVID-19 pandemic as that was declared back in 2020. And I just want to state that as a staff, you guys did a really good job in tackling COVID in many different areas. Early on, obviously, just trying to get people to have distances, the masks later on, the testing, and of course, the vaccination that went into it. So I just want to compliment staff when we did implement these emergency actions to protect the public. I think the staff did a really good job. And of course, I want to recognize, you know, our public safety, members of staff who dealt with the public in front, of course, obviously at that time, when the COVID was at the height, members, our, our staff was probably more at risk getting the pandemic. So thank you very much, and can I have a consent calendar motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Rue, seconded by Councilmember Martinez, and let's have a voice call, a voice vote.
And this is for the consent calendar, except for item C1?
With the exception of item C1, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Dutre?
So aye, so that the consent calendar with exception of item C1 is adopted. And now we'll go to communications, city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the one item that's indicated in the agenda, but we're pulling that one. We'll bring that back to the council at a future meeting.
Okay.
So I have nothing this evening.
There's no, no closed session tonight?
Correct.
City manager, Star?
Just one, one item. Unfortunately, I want to announce that last week, the state of California released its grant distributions under the Transit and the City Rail Capital Program. And unfortunately, the request for $800 million to extend the gold line from Pomona to Claremont and the city of Montclair was not funded to any degree by the state of California. We had received notification the day before that full funding was coming to the project, but sometime in the preceding 24 hours, a decision was made in Sacramento to redistribute the funding that was allocated to the gold line to other projects. It is our belief that that distribution is based primarily on the fact that a few of the projects that weren't even recommended by Metro to be funded were approved for federal funding as federal transit administration grant projects. And because those projects did have some federal dollars behind them, not the full amount to complete the projects, the state of California made the decision that it was better not to lose those federal dollars and to provide the necessary funding to complete the projects by distributing those dollars that were otherwise allocated to the gold line to those projects so that they could be completed. So unfortunately, we're back at ground zero. This clearly means that the gold line will not be arriving in Montclair by 2028 or 2029, depending ultimately on what the funding source will be, will ultimately determine what that arrival time will be. I would suggest that the council not look any earlier than probably 2032 before the arrival of the gold line in the city of Montclair. Unfortunately, that delay would probably be a result of the fact that we would have to go after federal dollars, and federal dollars would require a NEPA review, even though we've already done CEQA as our environmental review. The federal government does not at this time recognize a state's environmental review as sufficient to meet its requirements, so we would have to conduct a NEPA review, which would add a couple of years to the evaluation, again pushing us until early 2030s before the project would arrive in Montclair.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Councilmember Rue.
Now, go ahead.
In connection to this, I have had an extensive conversation with Assemblymember Chris Holden, Senator Anthony Portantino, and recently, as of Saturday, with Assemblymember Freddy Rodriguez. There may be some other options for us. I won't go into all the details tonight, I'm not there in person, but I think we need to be a bit more optimistic. I think we can do this before that. I would suggest that sometime we sit down with Assemblymember Holden, Senator Portantino, and Assemblymember Rodriguez, regroup on some strategy. Thank you.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I can add on top of that, I did meet with Assemblymember Rodriguez last week. We had a discussion about funding for the gold line. I asked the assembly member if he could arrange for a meeting between members of the Montclair City Council and city staff with members of the governor's office, and Assemblymember Rodriguez indicated he would try and secure that meeting. So if what Councilmember Rue says is correct, then perhaps that would be an opportunity to press for those additional funds from those other sources.
Well, yeah, let's say...
The City Manager, Assemblymember Rodriguez indicated to me, additionally, I will be traveling to Sacramento in the next month or six weeks with the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, and this is one of their top priorities, Claremont to Montclair. So there may be some opportunities if we push forward and just, you know, look at the positive aspects of this, we can get things done. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll keep digging through the gold line. A little disappointed, but we'll keep, we'll keep throwing it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I know you've been involved in these conversations as well. I knew you've had conversations with the Chief of Staff or Assemblymember Chris Holden, Matt Lyons with Assemblymember Chris Holden's office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on. So Mayor, myself, we'll start with the council committee liaison assignments. Any, I know, Councilmember Rue, you say you had no, no changes. You told me earlier. Anybody else have a change? Nobody, nobody wants to change? We do have one vacancy on the planning commission interview panel, and I will take that vacancy. I'll just, I'll take that on. Dutre and Johnson.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor.
And so with that, then we will need a motion for approval of the, of the assignment.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion as presented.
Great, and then, got a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Martinez. Can we have roll call vote?
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that's adopted four to zero. Okay, and the second item is report on status of Biano training for City Council pursuant to AB 201234 for ethics and, of course, AB 1661 for sexual harassment prevention. And Andrea, I was going to ask you, can you announce which councilmembers have completed their, their ethics in harassment courses?
So I just today received both of Councilmember Lopez's certificates for sexual harassment and ethics, and I think Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Johnson... Um, and I think, um, Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, are you still working on ethics?
I'm still working on ethics. I'm 39% through and trying to get back into the system.
All right, and other than that, everyone is up to date.
Everybody else, everybody else is, uh, okay, so...
Yes.
All right, then, uh, that's a ca...
Madam, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Bill.
Madam City Clerk, I am up to date on this.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, so, uh, Councilmember...
Because I, I take it from four different entities, so I wanted to make certain of that.
Yeah, you're up to date, Bill, so it, uh, so...
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you're up to date. Councilmember Martinez is up to date. Councilmember Lopez is up to date. I'm up to date, and then, uh, I know, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson was working her, uh, working on her ethics at, uh, 39%, and then the system crashed. So, all right, thank you very much.
I had that happen to me, so...
All right. Earlier, uh, uh, as I, as I earlier talked about the, um, COVID, uh, emergency regulations going away, um, that includes AB 361. Um, so that goes away effective February 28th. So starting March 1, if we wanna meet at city council, you can't, uh, you have to meet under the old Brown Act rules. Meaning if you're at home, or you're someplace else, you're gonna have to, uh, uh, announce it in advance, and then you gotta have the, have your, the address of the location you're gonna be at on the agenda, and then you have to post the agenda at the location where that, you know, will take place 72 hours in advance. So those are the old rules, and no more the, uh, the AB 361 rules where you just can be at home and, and, uh, either call in or go on Zoom without, without having to post anything, so...
Um, Mayor Dutre, there was, um, legislation passed that amended the Brown Act to allow for remote participation by members of a legislative body, but they're very restrictive, and there are limits on how many times it can be done. So it's possible, but...
It is possible, but, uh, you said they're very restrictive and very, uh, yes, so... I think on the safe side, we just go back to the old brown-ish, Brown Act, which we've all been coming to the meetings in the first place.
Yeah.
And then, um, if there's a... All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Madam City Clerk, just a question. Uh, there may be time in my professional life as we reopen that I may not be in the city of Montclair as long as I am in a public place available to the public, a lobby of a hotel, a lobby of a restaurant or an office building. Will I be in compliance then?
Yes, as long as the agenda is posted. Right, as long as the agenda is posted at least 72 hours before the meeting starts. Uh, so you, if you're at a hotel, you would need to speak to the hotel staff.
If you're in a hotel room and the members of the public, go inside the room.
Right, and you could even talk to, you know, the hotel staff to use, you know, their business center and have that open to the public.
Right, I would do that. I've done that in the past with the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board. Thank you, Madam City Clerk and Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Okay, I just wanna recognize during the month of February, um, is obviously Black History Month, and we just talked about that event. It'll be taking place here in the city of Montclair. Uh, it's also the American Heart Month, and of course, uh, in February, the middle part of February, we'll celebrate the President's Day, including George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. I think you guys remember those folks, right? You've heard of them before, before? Okay, so, that's for the month of February. Um, and then the last thing I wanna talk about is the Montclair High School soccer program. How many of you know that we have a very good boys' soccer program in Montclair High School? Anybody know that?
We do.
Uh, they are not only, uh, playing Thursday in their first CIF, uh, game, uh, they're the, the league champion of Mount Baldy. I believe they're ranked number six or eight in the nation, and ranked in the top five in the state of California, and they're playing in Division One soccer. Now, they're playing in Division Three, uh, I believe last year with Division Three. This year, they're in Division One in soccer, and they're ranked, I believe, number four in the southern section, if I'm correct? So they're playing Thursday at Montclair High School. I'm not sure what time, but, uh, I think this would be a good opportunity for us to show us our city spirit for our Montclair High School boys', uh, soccer team. So go Cavs on Thursday, all right? And hopefully, uh, CIF, uh, CIF trophy, uh, a big one, CIF trophy to Montclair. Uh, Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, so, uh, we've obviously had a rough week in Montclair, so I just wanted to say that my heart goes out to the community and, and, uh, you know, everyone's in my thoughts, especially the family members that were affected this week. On a happier note, I see our own Montclair high schooler, Dallas, sitting in our audience, I believe, um, sh, as part of her high school's requirement. She's joining us today along with a classmate, I imagine. And what is your name? Ruby? Well, welcome you two, and I hope you guys come more often and just to see what is going on in our community. And, you know, maybe you will be up here one day, Dallas.
Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, number one, I would like to, um, ditto to Councilwoman Martinez's comments. Um, but then secondarily, um, I really wanna give a huge kudos and shout-outs to our Public Works Department. Over the last about week and a half or so, they have put up over 70 banners throughout the city, business banners. And why that's so important is those, a portion of those banners, the proceeds from those banners goes to the Montclair to College Program. So thank you to Public Works for all of their diligent work. On top of everything else they're doing, now they're climbing poles and putting up banners. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rube?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. Uh, I too understand this has been a rough week in the city of Montclair. I commend all of our public safety who have done this yeoman's job on this. Also, those who have been involved in our medical field, our medical professionals who have been at the hospitals handling this. They are to be commended for their efforts and the way they've conducted themselves. This is not a typical situation for Montclair, and I know that our wonderful police department will eventually be able to come to a conclusion on this. On a more somber note, on January 24th, I did attend the memorial held in the city of Monterey Park for the victims of the shooting. Two of the councilmembers, Henry Lowe and Thomas Wong, are longtime personal friends of mine. We've supported each other in our political efforts and involvements. It was held with dignity. It was held with a sense of being solemn and somber. There were, I can't tell you how many people attended. I gave my condolences on behalf of Montclair as we would. The entire area around City Hall was filled with people. I happened to be standing next to, just I happen to stand, our US Senator Alex Padilla, Congressmember Judy Chu, our US Senator, our state senator, rather, Susan Rubio, LA County Supervisor Phyllis Solis, many, many other people who said nothing. The event was designed so that the council would give a story about each of the victims, and then they had the faith-based communities representing that area speak. I arrived early, and there was an elderly man sitting in front of the memorial, simply chanting and moving back and forth. The tears in his eyes broke everybody to tears. We are united as a community in all of this, whether it's Monterey Park or Montclair. We're all tied together. And all of us need to look at these issues, these situations, and say, what if it was me? I did find out later on that one of our, in my professional life, one of our board of directors is a commissioner in the city of Bald, of, uh, Alhambra, and she was there as well. She knew some of the victims. This is a tr, a horrific situation, but I know that each one of us has a resolve that we will make sure that we find ways to solve this situation and do everything we can to identify mental health issues before they go to this capacity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you very much, and, uh, Chief, I just wanna tell you that I commend all the police officers and firefighters, all the hard work they did this past week, and it was a very difficult, uh, job, um, for our staff to do. Uh, a lot of, uh, just disheartening issues to look at, stress levels, and, um, I know the detectives, obviously, gotta come in at their own time. Just, just say thank you to everybody there. We, they, they, you know, it was hard. I really, I, we all understand that. So say thank you to our, uh, to both police and fire. We're adjourned.